Staff, we're seeking some input and direction from the city council to help us determine what our next step should be. Going back to kind of lay the groundwork where, you know, where we've come from and where we are now. Measure H, as many of you recall, was passed several years ago. Quartersent sales tax that was meant to raise $355 million per year for the next 10 years to provide for services to address the homelessness crisis. Under Measure H, a portion of those funds are allocated to St. Joseph's Center that then is providing homeless services to not just Malibu, but the west side area, but it includes Malibu. Measure H also provides for planning and implementation grants that cities are eligible to apply for, which is based on our homeless count. And we have applied for two of these grants and received these grants, one for developing our homelessness plan and one more recently to fund a housing navigator. So we also, we contract with The People Concern. They are a nonprofit based in Santa Monica. With The People Concern, we have a team of people who assist us. We have two full-time outreach workers and one part-time supervisor. We also have a housing navigator, one full-time housing navigator, who assists the outreach worker because they're the ones, the outreach workers are out, you know, talking directly with the homeless individuals, doing case management. And then the housing navigator is focused simply on trying to find locations where people can be housed, building relationships with landlords that will take vouchers and such. Also, The People Concern has access to a number of shelter and housing options, both at their site in Santa Monica and through the whole continuum of care in LA County. So there's a lot of resources that come along with our contract with The People Concern. So as I mentioned before, Measure H provided us a $50,000 grant to develop a homelessness strategic plan that was adopted in, I think, 2018. It includes seven goals. One of the goals has to do with reducing homelessness overall. We also have a goal to address public safety concerns. We also have a goal to prevent homelessness because although some people may not realize it, but there are actually people in the city of Malibu who are on the edge of becoming homeless, and we've actually worked within these individuals at times. Another goal is to provide outreach to folks who are homeless. Another goal is to do advocacy at the county, state, and federal level to make changes in legislation, policy, funding streams, stuff like that. And also a goal to increase awareness and public education. And then the last goal we have has to do with governance. And then governance is where we establish the Malibu Homelessness Working Group, which meets every month to track our progress in implementing our strategic plan. And that group is open to the public, and we frequently invite people, when I get phone calls from people who have concerns, I invite them to come to our working group. And it's a great place to get information, ask questions, because we have all the right people there. In Malibu, there has also been a long history of a meals program. It was initiated by faith-based and community organizations quite some time ago. Over the years, it's changed locations, sometimes, you know, due to concerns by neighbors who were near the location of the meal program. It was at the Malibu Methodist Church for a time, and we moved it to the county courthouse in 2018 because we felt that might be a better location because it wasn't as close to residential areas, schools, and such. So it's moved to the county courthouse. Unfortunately, that move was completed in September of 2018, right before the Woolsey fire. So they hadn't had more than a couple meals, and then they were dislocated and went back to the Methodist Church and have been there since. We also assist with homeless connect days, which are, you know, largely coordinated through Supervisor Kuehl's office and a number of other groups to provide this service at least twice a year. This is a place where homeless individuals can come and get easy access to a variety of services. They can get connected to services, start the documentation process for getting into housing, get replacement of documents like IDs. Just having a simple identification is really important. And at the same time, they can get a haircut, some clean clothes. Doctors and dentists usually attend as well. The Malibu Lost Hills Sheriff's Station also has a number of resources that we use to assist us with addressing safety concerns. They have a special deputy who is there to address the day-to-day issues. We also have the homeless outreach services team, often referred to as the host team, and they assist us when we have large encampments. And a large encampment is basically defined as having five individuals or more. So when we're in that situation, we call the host team. There's also a mental evaluation team assigned to Lost Hills Sheriff's Station. They are there as a resource for deputies who are called to respond to individuals who may need mental health services. They will call the Met Team to come on out, and they are specially trained, and they come out with a mental health worker as well. So specially trained deputies along with a mental health worker to address those situations. Encampments are addressed in several ways depending on the size of the encampment and the location. When it comes to public property, small encampments on public property are cleared by deputies fairly regularly, although sometimes, you know, they come back frequently too, obviously. But we regularly clear those with our regular deputies. Larger encampments, like I said before, we'll call the host team for assistance with those. And then if an encampment is on private property, it's a little bit easier. We can clear it by enforcing trespassing laws. But even then, we have to have, or the sheriff's department has to have permission from the property owner to enter the property and remove the individual. And so if it's a property that's vacant, they either have to contact the property owner or the property owner can have a letter of agency on file with the sheriff's department that gives them permission to enter the property and remove individuals. To address camping or sleeping on public property, we've had some challenges. We have an ordinance prohibiting camping on public property. It's been in place for some time. However, last September, the ruling of Martin versus Boise resulted in our inability to continue to enforce that particular ordinance. We also have on the books that we use, it's a California vehicle code that is used. It provides for the 72-hour parking rule, which essentially says no vehicle is to stay parked in the same place on a state highway for 72 hours or more without moving. Unfortunately, most people who are parked on the highway understand this rule and tend to move before citations are written, but that rule is in place. Getting back to Martin versus City of Boise, that was a 2018 ruling by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. It prevents cities from enforcing sleeping, camping restrictions on public property if there are no available alternatives. So that would be like shelter, transitional housing, safe parking, all those types of things. Los Angeles County Council has opined that LASD cannot issue camping citations for the time being because of that ruling that happened. Recreational vehicles on PCH. As you all know, we've had a recent influx of recreational vehicles on PCH. The state's current ordinance regarding oversized vehicles cannot be enforced without a coastal development permit to install signs. In the past, we've been unable to secure the CDP. It's been appealed in the past to the Coastal Commission. However, right now, the city has recently adopted a revised ordinance based on a county parking ordinance that was successful in getting a CDP. So we are right now in the process of getting CDPs to begin parking restrictions on PCH to assist with that problem. Safe parking program. A safe parking program provides individuals who live in their cars a safe place to park. It's typically run by a nonprofit organization who provide services and security. So it's not just for anybody. You have to be enrolled in services. You have to be registered with the service. So it's restricted to just those individuals. So it's not a free-for-all for anybody who wants to park for free. A safe parking program that was proposed for Dan Blocker Beach Parking Lot was discussed by the Public Safety Commission in June 2019. However, we are still looking for options, different locations for a safe parking program. Winter shelters. The Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority operates a winter shelter program from December 1st through March 31st. The West Los Angeles Armory is the shelter that serves individuals in Malibu, and there is transportation provided from Malibu to the armory that is available to people. That concludes my report. Also here in the audience, I just want to be able to point out some guests that we have to serve as subject matter experts so that as we discuss the topic, if you have questions or need information that can be provided by these individuals. We'll start with John Misery, if you just give a wave. He is the CEO of The People Concern. We have Alex Gittinger, wave your hand, let him know who you are. He's our outreach worker supervisor at The People Concern. Scott Edens, raise your hand, outreach worker with The People Concern. Mike Trina, where are you, Mike?
Right here.
Right here. He's our special, very, very special deputy who assists us with homeless individuals. Jim Braden in the back there, he's our sergeant and liaison to Malibu. Molly Reisman, are you Molly right there? She is Supervisor Kuehl's Housing and Homelessness Deputy. We also have Teresa Sharnovsky right here, District Director for Supervisor Kuehl's Office. Sorry, raise your hand. Next to her, excuse me, we have Teri Davis, and I won't forget Carol Moss right here, both of CART, the Community Assistance Resource Team. And Teri is quite versed in safe parking, so if you have safe parking questions, she's a good person to call on to discuss that. Also, we have a variety of other people from the sheriff's department. We have Bill Kitchen, who's a sergeant for the host team. That's our homeless outreach services team. We have Eddie Gutierrez, deputy also with the host team. Shai Schecklo, deputy with the host team. Rodrigo Ortiz, deputy with the mental evaluation team. And Danny Moody, who is with the mental evaluation team, but he's from the Department of Mental Health. And so please feel free to call on any of them with questions or information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Susan. I am going to announce this is the end of the acceptance of public speaker slips, and we have quite a few. So I will call you in threes, and if you don't mind coming up close to the front so that we don't lose time between speakers, that would be appreciated. The first speaker is William Winoker. You have four minutes, followed by Kelly Peses. You also have four minutes, followed by Kay Gabbert. Excuse me, one moment, as long as S. Harrison is here in the audience giving you an extra minute. No, thank you, okay.
Mayor, for our city council members, the term homeless is a very broad and encompasses a very large group of people, well beyond the subset of the growing population of mentally ill and substance-addicted transients who are flowing into Malibu, straining the limits of the city's resources and presenting a danger to themselves and others. I commend the compassion of many of my neighbors who want to help and whose help often takes the form of giving out free food and money. But unfortunately, these nobly motivated actions are having the unintended consequence of prolonging the cycles of addiction, mental illness, and eventually chronic homelessness. The role of government is to protect the weak and defend the defenseless, but it is not to elevate any one person or group of people above the rest of society. But that is precisely what seems to be happening now. No one here is saying that being poor or without a home is a crime, but solutions must also respect the safety and welfare of the entire community. There are rules that we all must live by, and many of these transients are not being held to any standards which harms the community as well as puts those very same people at constant risk of disease and death. The Ninth Circuit's ruling affirmed that the act of sleeping in public in and of itself with minimal bedding is not a crime. It specifically, though, does not condone criminal behaviors, setting up of tent-like dwellings, defecating anywhere one pleases, using and selling drugs, making fires, blocking public access, and inhibiting the general public's ability to freely use those same public areas and facilities. It also allows municipalities to set aside areas that can and can't be used for public sleeping and perhaps for overnight parking. There are existing laws that protect the common welfare of the entire community, and where those laws are in compliance with state and federal rulings, they must be enforced. And where they are lacking or need revision, they should be modified so as to remove ambiguity and to protect the entire community, including the very people who need assistance getting back on their feet and/or the appropriate treatment that they need. In closing, though this issue can be somewhat seemingly divisive, we are, there are no enemies here in Malibu. Everybody has strong opinions, but we all want a wonderful community, and we all are compassionate about people who, sorry, who find themselves in homeless or, again, situations that they need help, whether voluntarily or possibly involuntarily. So anyway, I thank the city council for taking this issue very seriously and for really looking after the well-being of the entire community, homeless, transient, but, you know, people who live here and want to enjoy the beauty of Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelly Peses. You have four minutes. Is Susan Melzoni here? Okay, thank you. And just one moment, then we have Kay Gabbert and Bruce Silverstein.
Mayor, fair council, first of all, I want to thank you all, Mikey, for getting this on the agenda and to all of you for agreeing to hear us tonight. Kelly Peses, speaking on behalf of the Malibu Safety Coalition. We come before you today to ask you to take a leadership role and specific action. In conjunction with CART and other special service providers, we ask you, our city leaders, to implement and strengthen policy concerning health department protocols of our homeless and vehicle encampments, stronger enforcement of our health and civil codes. Some of our codes need to be rewritten, clarified, strengthened, so that they can be codified and enforced. We need to identify the types of homeless, especially the service-resistant, to help them find their way back to being productive members of our society. We need to help our business owners by enforcing vagrancy codes. We need to help our residents by enforcing camping codes. We need top-down leadership by the city. We can't be afraid to enforce our health and safety codes, but rather we need to get legal guidance, specifically regarding Martin v. Boise, instead of electing not to take action out of fear. Federal case law shows that statutes are challenged for vagueness and for wide sweeping criminalization of our homeless laws, but common sense measures are allowed. We respectfully ask for a legal examination of the latest versions of the Los Angeles municipal codes 56.11 and 85.02. Together, they address the daily removal of tents and restrict the sleeping in vehicles to the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM and in certain locations. Both were revised after a 214 civil lawsuit, Desert Rain versus the City of Los Angeles. 56.11 has been voted on and reaffirmed at least eight times since 2016 by the City of Los Angeles. It reads, and I quote, "Public areas should be accessible and available to residents and the public at large for their intended use. Unauthorized storage of public property," that doesn't sound right, but sorry, "interferes with the rights of other members of the public and can create a public health or safety hazard." This does balance the needs of all, and it does not make being homeless illegal. Our city should have the right to enforce similar civil codes. Please, we ask you for your help in tailoring something similar. Finally, and most importantly, we need a task force that includes city management, deputies, the city attorney, civil rights attorneys, health department, social service agencies, Malibu stakeholders, and representatives from our business and residential communities. Societies form and exist on order and cooperation. Cooperation is essential to our health and well-being. What it means to be a contributing part of society is a basic function of what it is to be human. This is true of all of our stakeholders, both housed and unhoused. The homeless are living in unsanitary, predatory, and unsafe conditions. There's nothing humane about ignoring this. What we ask of you today is a commitment to a timeline to specifically address these items and for a resolution tonight to formulate a true homeless task force so that we can preserve Malibu for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kay Gabbert, followed by Bruce Silverstein, followed by Keegan Gibbs.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Thank you for this gathering. I am here tonight to listen to my neighbors' thoughts and solutions to Malibu's responsibility to those less fortunate while keeping Malibu safe, and because I agree with Arnold York's Malibu Times, December 12, 2019, opinion piece, that this growing problem will not go away until, and I quote, "everyone, every town, every city is going to have to take a share of the homeless population and also provide basic amenities." There is no one solution or next step, but psychiatrists tell me that one solution for those who are mentally ill must involve expanding the number of choices they have for treating them. Treatment may now involve prescribing medications a few days in a hospital and then back on the street with obvious inability to cope. The ineffective current laws, lack of funding, and society's perception of the mentally ill are obstacles that they are working on and changing with our help. Those who deal with the unsheltered with addictions tell me that they have found success first by making human connections and then by following up with support that comes after they have made these connections through outreach workers, AA programs, inpatient treatment, and medications. Those who deal with finding jobs and housing for the homeless tell me success involves gaining the trust of the client, allowing them to think about accepting help. Secondly, finding affordable and safe housing. And thirdly, providing continued supportive care for the transition involved when one moves from streets to living indoors with rules that seem intrusive, arbitrary, and foreign. And support to help them understand what it means to show up every day for a job, act appropriately with coworkers, and believe that they deserve, can, and should keep that job is critical. A phone call, a support group, continued social worker visits can make all the difference. The amenities Arnold York was referring to might look as simple as lockers to store their belongings, laundry facilities or tokens for a bus, temporary tents or tiny houses in a safe Malibu location, a motorhome dumping station at our new water treatment plant, more porta-potties and trash bins along PCH and parking regulations. Many maybe support group meetings, medical psychiatric services, job training, showers, meals, all housed in one facility. I really don't know what we will decide, but I do know that I believe the unsheltered deserve to be treated with dignity, that they are our responsibility, that we cannot assume someone else will make provisions for them, that they often take care of each other, that they have dreams and failures and bad days, that they don't always act appropriately because they can't, that they might lack good hygiene and have addictions, but mostly they're just like me. Appreciative of this city helping them get back to a more familiar life. I look forward to our coming together to decide what our next steps will be. Let's be look to Malibu for what we did and not what we didn't do. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bruce Silverstein, followed by Keegan Gibbs, followed by Kimberly Dobler. I apologize. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank you for having this meeting and for looking into this serious issue. Also, before I begin, I do want to say there was a fire today on Harbor Vista. That's the street I live on, and it was dealt with efficiently, expeditiously, and without serious consequences. So we really owe a debt of gratitude to the local fire department for that one. As far as the homelessness population issue is concerned, it seems to me there's two sides of this. There's the support, what can be done to help, and there's the what can be done to enforce what's necessary for the non-homeless local population who need the support of the city as well. I suspect, I don't know this, but I suspect that a very small fraction of the homeless population in Malibu is actually Malibu residents who've lost their homes. Maybe with the fire, that has increased recently, but I don't think that's what we're here talking about. Most of the homeless population, I suspect, is transient. They've come here from elsewhere. It's, you know, we all, as human beings, have a responsibility to try to help all other human beings. But as a legal matter and as a financial fiscal, local fiscal matter, it is not the responsibility of the City of Malibu to care for everyone that comes into the political border. It can't, and can't be, because the more help you provide, and this was touched upon by an earlier speaker, the more help you provide, the greater the population will become. This is unfortunately a national problem, international problem, and as dysfunctional as our national government is, they really need to take the reins. We can provide our proportionate financial support, just like everyone else in the country can, but the solution has to come from the top. It has to be broader than anything Malibu can do. So that leaves the question of what can Malibu do to stem the tide and to help the local residents who are not homeless, because there are issues there. And I've written about this, I think some of you have seen this. The Boise decision is nowhere near as broad as people are giving it credit for being. It's like a boogeyman, and it's not that broad. In fact, it says it's a narrow opinion. It explicitly states that restrictions could be made which are time-sensitive, location-sensitive. It says that as long as people have a reasonable alternative, enforcement can be had. And I think we really do need to give serious thought to what specific restrictions can we create that can be enforced and which can make life more livable for those who are not homeless. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Keegan Gibbs, followed by Kimberly Dobler, followed by Mariah Bauer.
Thank you, Alex. Evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. So the reason why I'm here today is I've been trying to kind of dig into this issue as much as I can, and I feel like a layman compared to a lot of the professionals that are here. So I try to put myself in my own shoes to try to spread some of the information that I found that may surprise some people that I think is pertinent to our situation. So I made a, I'm not, you could ask me to make a feature-length documentary, I can shoot it, direct it, edit it, and everything, but I'm not very good at PowerPoint, so please excuse my crudeness. Yes, with the remotes as well.
We'll give you extra time, Keegan.
Thanks. So over the last few years, the rough estimate is around 170 to 220 people experiencing homelessness in Malibu. We don't have our numbers yet from the other day. I'm assuming they'll probably be a little bit higher than that considering the RV push down towards tuna. The rough ratio breaks down to 55 to 85 people sleeping outside, that mean you'd be tenting, sleeping bags, et cetera. And the guess is maybe 100 to 130 people in RVs or cars. This is the homeless in Los Angeles, how it breaks down. Out in the open, 26%. Emergency shelters, 25%. Motorhomes, vans, and cars all broken down right there. In Malibu, since we don't have emergency shelters, you can take that 25% and kind of push those in towards motorhomes, vans, cars, et cetera. Here's some areas in Los Angeles broken down with homeless population per square mile. Santa Monica, Los Angeles, Culver City, LA County. This is where Malibu sits, 10 people per square mile. And this is, you know, this doesn't account for our unencouraged And this is, you know, this doesn't account for our unincorporated areas. This is just Malibu City proper, about 20 square miles. So that's our density comparison. Los Angeles County has a 0.6 percent homelessness rate per capita. Malibu is roughly 0.2 percent, and I believe that number is actually a little high, considering we don't take into account our, who we call our own, which is our unincorporated areas of the canyons. There's also some misnomers that, you know, this very hurtful thing is that some people just want to live on the street. I hear some people come in here yelling at council to not get, to do something about these people, but I can't tell you that, I'm sure this is a big myth. All right, I know this is a big myth, because there was a lady here the other day that was, that lives on the beach and said, "These people are living just as good of a life as I do on the beach for free." And I'm like, I highly doubt that, you know? I'm sure they don't look at it that way when they're looking over at your house, so. Affluent communities in Malibu actually have a higher rate of homelessness than lower-income communities, because we actually contribute towards homelessness with lower density and our affluent areas, as partially due to denser housing, larger economic gaps. Oh yeah, here's my last one. Malibu as a community, we're not exempt from our exposure to or from helping solve this issue, and I really think the car, camping, shelters, and affordable housing are really important issues that we need to push for as quick as possible. Sorry for the long slide, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kimberly Dobler, followed by Mariah Bauer, I'm sorry if I'm saying your name wrong, and then Scott Dietrich.
Hi, thank you for your time. I've been listening to a lot of the different things here this evening, and what I wanted to say and what I'm going to say are basically going to be two different things. I came here from Laguna de Gallo. I don't live here. I'm a homeless person. I came from a horrible relationship. Who wants to live in Venice or Santa Monica? I grew up here. So some people who are here, I've never seen you before. You lived here a couple of years. To me, I stand back and I understand that there's a problem, but when this first gentleman talks and he says that it's about drug addiction and mental illness, there's a lot of people that don't have that. They literally don't want to stay. I didn't want to stay in Orange County, so, and I came from a brilliant home. I left a great job. I left my car, my dog, in my house. So I came here. I got a job, but I have to wait for it to open. So until that time comes, I'm going to be here. Do you think I'm happy? No. My daughter finished her PhD this past year. I don't, nobody knows I'm here. I just came. I'm safe. I'm not around a bunch of drug addicts. I'm not around a bunch of people that are looking to hurt your houses. They don't want to hurt anything. If you push them somewhere else, they're going to come back, because this place, whether you believe it or not, is the safest place for them to be. Venice, Santa Monica is where they come from. It's harder to get on a bus out here. You have to know the program, and the people feed you well and treat you like a human. Those are the same people that when I leave, and I leave for my job in Woodland Hills, I'm going to come back and help. But it's not all this bad stuff. There needs to be a place where people can go. I listen to the mentally ill people, the ones that are substance abuse, drives me crazy just as a mom. I'm like, my gosh, get yourself together. But there's something else that they need, and in order for you to deal with your problem, you're going to have to help them more, whether you think it's your responsibility or not, whether you live here for two years or 50 years. You're not going to be here for forever. Malibu is going to be here when you're gone, and these people, some of them have been here for nine, 12 years. They don't want to hurt you, but they need some help. They're not going to get it from me, because I try to talk to them, and quite frankly, there's not much you can say, but you can still treat them like human beings, and then you can do what you can to help them. And so that's what I think you should do. And these people that help us all the time, they're amazing, literally amazing. I had no idea. I thought I was a good, because I was a Girl Scout leader for six years, right? So I thought I was like the greatest person, but I turn around and these people give compassionately of their money, their time, everything. So that's what I wanted to say, is that they're going to be here. Just take a step back and start implementing some things to help them too. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, I believe it's Mariah, is that right, Bauer? Thank you. Scott Dietrich and Carol Moss, you have five minutes.
Thank you so much for your time. I actually did not come here planning to speak today, but I feel compelled to do so. I am a resident of Malibu. I was born and raised here, moved to Santa Monica, came back, but I'm also a licensed clinical social worker, and I work primarily with the reentry population, and I work mostly inside of the correctional facilities in LA County, and around eight different locations in LA County, and I'm curious to know if this meeting or people here are aware of some of the resources that might be available to some of the people who are homeless who have histories of incarceration. Of course, that's not going to cover everybody who is homeless. I realize that that would be a huge judgment across the board, but right now, there's a lot of money coming through for those who are on probation and on parole, for vocational training, for education, for, to address barriers towards employment, be it DUI classes, be it, you know, probation violations, or, you know, anger management classes, those types of things. So there's funding out there, and a lot of the reason why people end up being homeless or not being able to access housing is because of that one paycheck that they have to put towards anger management that they can't put towards rent. So I just wanted to be available to provide some of that information to whomever. And additionally, part of what's happening with the American Job Centers of California, and so my organization is in partnership with them, that there are, again, there's just a lot of opportunities for those who have histories of incarceration. And also, if someone's been recently incarcerated and was homeless, chances are they were attached to somebody inside of the jail through the Department of Health Services, most likely whole person care, and there is a medical caseworker that's trying to find them, and try and help them find housing and other resources in the community. So if there was a way for those individuals to get linked, there are other people looking for them. I can't tell you how many people I try to find after they get out of jail, and it's impossible, because there's no phones, they don't have a place to live, and that's just a challenge. But anyway, so I wanted to be here to provide some additional information and support, because I appreciate the efforts, and it is a challenging topic with not one solution, and yeah, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next is Scott Dietrich, you have four minutes, as long as Leah Johnson is here, thank you, and then Carol Moss, and then Marnie Kamens.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for hosting this meeting. What we are doing is failing. It's not working. In spite of our best efforts of the city, faith-based groups that have been at this for a long time, I remember SOS in, you know, alongside this building, they had a bus and they'd house people when it was cold. But what we're doing in Malibu, what we're doing particularly in a broader sense in Los Angeles is not working. Three to four people that are homeless die every day. That's not good. We're not getting people off the streets, we're getting more people that are homeless coming here. And there's consequences. A homeless encampment almost burnt down City Hall last summer. Fortunately, it wasn't Santa Ana. You heard Monday night, people down on the eastern end of the city complaining that their lives are being ruined. Now, that's a different issue. That's not really, I wouldn't call those people homeless. They've got the RV park. But when you look at the RVs, you can find them on Airbnb at Zuma. People are renting their RVs, and there's reports that some of these are hosted by people selling themselves. So you've got prostitution going along with it. It's, the whole thing's terrible. Boise does not require us to turn our back and do nothing. We must take aggressive measures, or we are going to be inundated by summer with these RVs. It's going across social media. Come to Malibu, it's free, park your RV, and when you look at the RVs, some of them are brand new, they're $200,000. Well, why not? They get to live on the beach for free. Excuse me. We need to help these people. We need to love them enough to do the things that will help them, and right now, we're, I think we're only enabling them. We give out vouchers for housing, but only 4 percent of the people will accept them. That means 96 percent, I think 13 out of almost 300 accepted vouchers, housing vouchers, that, you know, we're offering services, but they wouldn't accept it. A lot of them like to be out in the street, somebody's, I don't know, they don't, but they like that. But we can with Boise. Say 6:00 AM, boom, no more tent. We can clean that up. Will they come back? Perhaps. Of course, what we really need to do, and this sounds harsh, but it's what's required, because so many are mentally ill and addicted. We need statewide, countywide, to have something where they get a choice of, do you want to go to jail, or do you want to go into rehab of some kind? Get the mental help that they need. I know that's sort of beyond what we can do at the city, but if we do not stop this here and try to push them into services, it's going to double, it's going to triple, and then you're going to have the incident, the incident where they kill one another, they kill a resident breaking in. We do not want to face that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carol Moss. Carol has five minutes. Bianca Torrance?
Hi.
Yeah. I just want to make sure you're here. And Rob Bruce?
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, followed by Marnie Kamens and Don Schmitz.
Thank you, and thank you for holding the session. First of all, I want to compliment the county, the city staff, and the majority of the city council on doing their level best to deal with this very intractable crisis. Sheila Kuhl mentioned when they place 150 people one day, the next day, they've got 160, so it's just going to increase. People are falling into homelessness. There just are no easy answers. Our meals, people have conflicting concerns about them, but I do want to point out that there are ways that we create relationships, and you heard from a woman tonight who I met at the meals, was able to get her a computer, and now she's got a $27 job at Amazon. So the meals augment what the people's concern do, as well as feeding people. Lastly, I went to a meeting of the Palisades Task Force on Mental Health and learned that in order to treat people, they have to be considered gravely disabled. Well, gravely disabled is a very flexible definition, and what I learned is if there are funds and there are resources, hospitals, psychiatrists, then the definition of gravely disabled broadens. So it tells me we all have to fight for real funding for mental health if we want to help these people off our streets. Thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you. Next is Marnie Kamens, followed by Don Schmitz, followed by Paul, sorry, Arelo? I probably said that completely wrong.
Hi, I'm Marnie Kamens. I'm speaking on behalf of the Malibu Safety Coalition to ask you to take some action. I actually have this prepared sort of speech, but as I've been listening to everybody's speeches, I kind of changed my mind about what I want to talk about. You know, what got me interested in this issue is about two years ago, I was assaulted, I don't know where the homeless woman is, but I was assaulted when I was with my then-two-year-old daughter at the park by a homeless person. So the idea that they're not dangerous and yielding weapons and, you know, I have a neighbor that was riding her horse and someone came out with a chainsaw in Legacy Park, turned it on, has everything, you know, scared her horse, but also they use the chainsaw to make a little place for themselves. I have another neighbor in Las Tunas Canyon who has video, I don't know if he was supposed to come tonight, but he has video on his cell phone of a homeless person that comes with his two pit bulls onto his land, he has a knife. This neighbor, you know, usually ends up calling the police, but he's had this happen like 14 to 15 times the past year. It's scary, and really, I think what I wanted to focus on is not the issue of homelessness, because that's, you know, too big, too big for me to talk about. I can't cure cancer, I can't cure AIDS, I can't offer even solutions for the problem in California and all across the country. But what I'm here to say is to ask you guys as our leaders to maintain the roads and to maintain the parks, and to make it a safe place for me to live and for other people that do, that do live here and pay their taxes, to make it safe. I drive to West LA for work, and there was a bee in the car, this was like two months ago. I couldn't pull over, because there were so many people living in their vehicles on the side of the road that I couldn't pull over, and there's no space, and so maintain your parks and roads, figure it out. This isn't about homelessness for me, this is about people are doing something illegal. They're not supposed to be there, and they're doing something against the law, criminal, and you guys have your hands tied, and I know there's all these reasons against it, but figure that out, because you're, either it's allowed or it's not allowed. I have a lot of junk on my property that belongs to my husband that I would love to store at the park. I can bring wood, I have an old car, I have, we have piles of crap that he's working to figure out how to fix. I'll store it at the park if you're allowed to do that. So tell me, are you allowed to store your junk out, or do you have to pay for storage? Because I also, I would store stuff there. I know I'm up, but yeah, just it's allowed or it's not allowed. People are, yeah.
Next is Don Schmitz.
How am I going to follow that?
And then Paul, I apologize, Arela? Ayello, thank you.
A PowerPoint for you, I'm sure you're shocked. Don Schmitz for the record, and I want to, I want to show you a couple of things without any sort of commentary on many of the issues dealing with homeless. I want to show you kind of what we're dealing with. So we had a client, we found a homeless encampment, and we have these procedures that we have to go through with the city of Malibu, with the Sheriff's Department, there's very specific protocols to do it correctly, as opposed to good old boys going out there and just rousing them off the property. You've got to get clearance to get the campers off of the property, you have to give them access to outreach services, clear warnings, and you have to post a site that's about to be cleaned up. And there's all sorts of procedures to put people in touch with services and housing and things of that nature. So we have some clients have a very large piece of property on 194453 Pacific Coast Highway, and I was out there doing some analysis, getting ready to make an application, and found that we had a pretty big encampment on there when we were flying the drone around. So we went out, we took a look at it, and that's what we found. So we started working with the Sheriff's Department, and it was quite a procedure, and they gave us signs that we went out there and we posted it. You have to give them proper notices, no trespassing. And by the way, the Sheriff's Department was awesome in regards to providing us assistance in regards to this. They went out there, they notified them, and so we started to clean it up. We signed a contract with this BioClean company. On day one, we had three tons of debris and trash which we took off the property. We were out there for three days, and this is post-clean-up. You can see that there was a waterway which ran right through the encampment, and you can see that there's an inlet to a drain that goes straight out to the ocean. In a city that is spending millions of dollars every year to be in compliance with Federal Clean Water Act, requiring property owners to pull out septic systems, put in next-generation systems, building centralized sewage treatment plants, and we have these encampments from Topanga Canyon to the county line. So this is what it looked like afterwards, looks pretty good. In summary, we collaborated with the Sheriff's Department on the cleanup efforts, we gave them 72 hours notice, it was done as humanely as possible, they did leave the property. There was three days of cleanup to do this work. We had six crew members out there for those entire three days, and I don't know if you noticed the pictures, but they're wearing those moon suits like it's the coronavirus coming out of China. There was three daily dumpster loads that we hauled off of the property. We finished up on January 26, 2020 with BioClean team. There was 9.88 tons, 19,000 pounds of debris, 203 pounds of it, sharps, needles, and bio waste. Total cost to my client was $200,000. Total cost to my client was $28,000. One encampment. And the Sheriff's Department says there was three people living there.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Ayello.
Hi, thank you for having this hearing. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Malibu Safety Coalition. I have three quick points. All of us here, we all want to handle this with dignity and compassion. I think everyone in Malibu feels the same way. But as Marnie just spoke, there's two sides of this issue. And the truth is the homeless in Malibu are now living in unsanitary, predatory, and unsafe conditions. And many can't see their way out of the daily cycle of survival. And unlike the well-spoken homeless woman who came from Santa Monica, many of them are not that well-adjusted. And, you know, to back this up, UCLA did a study and published that the LA Housing Authority thought that 30% were clinically pathological in this affliction of homeless because of mental, physical, and substance abuse. But then after their study, they concluded it was 70%. So it's not compassionate to just leave these people out there. They think they're safe. They're not safe. And of course, it's impacting us on the other side, too. The other side for you as a city is that the District Attorney Jackie Lacy did a five-year annual cost study of what this costs LA. They came up with a stat that it's $1 million every five years for each individual. So I know the City of Malibu cannot afford this. I don't know what the solution is, but this is going to bankrupt the city if people keep coming. And I know you're afraid of the Boise decision, but other people have told you it's being misinterpreted. I say we do have to be compassionate with how we handle this. But also the municipal code 56111 that deals with the tents and taking them down in the morning, I don't know that that's being enforced. No? Okay. Because, you know, there's two sides of this. We want to be compassionate, but the reality is the city is too small to be able to handle this. And this is going to cost a fortune for us. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you to all the speakers. And I will now ask, as we begin our council comments, for Mayor Pro Tem Mikey Pearson to begin as this was his council item to hold a special meeting tonight.
First of all, thank you so much to everybody who's here, to everyone who's spoken, everyone who wrote emails, including over the last few months. And just know that we hear you loud and clear. And I really appreciate it if you think of things tonight that you want to say, that you didn't get to say, or that come to mind later. Please send emails on that, too. I think we're definitely in a phase right now where we need to express ourselves as we work our way through this issue. A few things. There's 151,000 homeless people in California. 59,000 of them are in Los Angeles County. 26% are chronically homeless or have a disability. 30% are African-American. More than 75% of them come from California. 11,000 homeless veterans in the streets of California. 8,000 families, 14,000 children were homeless in California last year. It was just said, and it's true. In LA County, up to 2/3 of the homeless suffer from psychological or substance abuse issues. And remember that just being homeless can cause mental issues. It's so stressful. Domestic abuse, being in prison, and being in the foster care system lead to very high rates of homelessness. Lack of affordable housing is also one of the major causes of people becoming homeless. But what do we do next? First of all, I want to thank the Community Advisory Group for their work in Malibu in this issue, 2018, and before, and now. The plan we have, we have a homeless plan. It is excellent. It's very well thought out, very well written. And I really appreciate all the work that went into that. It has seven different goals. Goal number one is reduce the number of people experiencing homelessness in Malibu by providing access to temporary and permanent housing solutions within Los Angeles County. In my opinion, it's become apparent that hoping the county deals with their issue is not working and it can't be our only solution anymore. Recently, I, along with other people, have had two conversations with our supervisor Kuhl, including one today. She was fantastic, to be honest, which was really great, especially since I was really not happy about the camping initiative thing. She did not hold it against us. Her opinion, just to share, is that we're at a place where every city has to do their part. We're no longer able to shove the issue to another city, to another part of the county. It's just not going to work anymore. She also asked, we're planning on doing something, that we also look at affordable housing, which has never been an affordable housing project in Malibu. I let her know that Karen and I have actually been working on that the last year. It's a very difficult project, but we're not giving up. Affordable housing, by the way, for those of you who don't know, is for working people, working families. It's not shelters. It's not low income. Or it is low income, but it's not no income. Last week, during the homeless count, Erin and I and Riva and Rick was there a bit on maybe another issue. We were in Sacramento and we got to meet with some of Gavin Newsom's people. And it was actually excellent. Excellent, I know it's really hard to see, but our lobbyists do an incredible job of getting us into meetings in the right way with the right people. We got to meet with Mark Tolson, the Deputy Cabinet Secretary. He's Gavin Newsom's person, really overseeing dealing with homelessness. And as you know, Newsom's becoming very aggressive about trying to deal with this issue. We also had a similar talk like we had with Sheila Kuhl. And I'll talk about that more in a second. But it's very clear, and it's been in the news even recently, that there is no choice left, in my opinion, but for every city to do their part. And I know we're doing stuff now. That's not what I'm talking about. I believe, in my opinion, that we need to be bold and we need to be innovative and we need to act. I believe Malibu should be a model city and community for dealing with homelessness. And it won't be easy, even if it's on a small scale. I think now is the time. We clearly, visually, we know we have to act. But on other levels, if we don't, things are going to be forced on us. And I think we need, by the state, by the county, I think it's in our best interest to make some hard choices now and be masters of our own fate. We've talked a lot about Boise versus Martin, and there's clearly some different opinions on how that works here. But that plus the Coastal Commission, plus different initiatives from the state, are once again, to me, just make it very clear that we have to move forward on programs on our own. And the advantage of doing that now, and the important advantage I want to share, is by taking the right actions, which won't be easy, we will then be able to enforce some of the laws that you people are speaking about tonight, which is important because we have to find that balance between compassion and dealing with this societal disaster and the community and the town that we live in and our safety and the safety of the citizens here. In my opinion, we need to do two major things. We need to look at a safe parking program, which I hope people understand is not a place that people and vehicles show up and live in. It's far from that. Safe parking program is generally run by an outside agency with security, with some services. And you have to be registered into the system to participate. And you can park at night and you have to leave in the morning. If we do that, we start to regain the ability to enforce our current codes, which we lost under Boise versus Martin. And don't trust me, we'll bring up some experts that can talk like Jim Braden here from the Sheriff's Department on what they're dealing with and how that looks and how that works. Number two, I think we need to look at bridge housing with wraparound services, which means mental health services and other services, too. If we do that, once again, you have to be signed up to be a part of that and in the system to be transitioned out of homelessness. We won't have a facility, obviously, the size of the ones in town. Our issue is smaller. But 55 to 85 people a night sleeping outside and the impact that you're all feeling every day, that's just, we can't continue, in my opinion. So, and there's different ways I can look, by the way. Because this is hard. I'm not going to pretend there's any easy answers on any of this. Safe parking, where do we do it? Sheila Kuhl has offered county resources that she will look at them with us. And she has Tessa here, Molly here, and they're going to help us. And she's offered up her team to be, work hand-in-hand with us on this. But it looks like we got to find lots and none of you are going to like any of the choices, but where we do this at night, so where there's security, where there's bathrooms, where they check in and they check out. And there, we're trying to transition them out of homelessness. Which, by the way, it is ironic that the definition of homeless includes people in RVs. And I get that. I see it, too. I've walked along and talked to people in the vast majority of RVs in our city. I totally get it. And to go further, I didn't know I was homeless when I lived in my RV for three years. So... On his property, it turns out. And the Cavallari's property. So options from the county could include the courthouse building being retrofitted. It could include part of our own land that we have, bringing in sort of modular housing. There's people that bring in sort of modular little deals to help deal with transitional-type housing and mental services. Once again, not easy. But I think we have to be strong and have the will. So what I want to bring, questions I'd like to bring here to the City Council underneath these two things I think we need to pursue are, number one, does the city need additional staff to address homelessness and affordable housing? It's a question I'm asking, but the answer is yes. This is big. This is hard. So I think we are going to need additional staff to deal with it, just including, not including, the people that come in and help us. Because we're not going to try and do this as a city-run thing. We're going to bring in experts. Also, should the city hire a security company to assist with the safety issues? If I'm bringing it up, you probably know how I feel about that. Should the city start the process now to decide what to do with all of our vacant land that we have? It's been delayed because of the Woolsey fire and the huge hit we took there. And I'm not suggesting we give it all to homelessness by any means. But if we're going to use any little bit of it, we promised this community they'd be involved in that decision. And I think it's going to be, it's expensive to do that whole process, but I would like to see us find the funds now, take it out of our nest egg and use it so we have a community discussion on those properties and see if it ends up including something that helps deal with this on a temporary or longer basis. On top of that, with the state mandate coming down identifying property for affordable housing, I want to continue with the mayor to push forward on that. We have had some people step forward on some ideas and some options. But I'd love to pursue that more because, and a couple of speakers said it here, really, at the end of the day, what you don't want to do is fall into homelessness because that is a nightmare to get out of, inexpensive and difficult. So I think for the people that work in Malibu on the low-income side, we need to have some sort of affordable housing project, which I can tell you, and some of you might have heard when Community Corp came and spoke here quite a few months ago. And I've toured their facilities with Karen in Santa Monica. Can't believe they're really nice. And, but yet they're affordable housing, which is a longer discussion. Doing my own research, I think that we have experts here and I'd love to get some of their opinions. But what is working in other cities right now that are having any success at all? Actually, it turns out there's about 80 cities in this country that have ended homelessness for veterans. There's four cities I could find that have ended homelessness in their own cities. It won't surprise you to know, none of them are in California. We certainly are taking the brunt of it. But what is working, only thing that is definitely working that can be seen is sort of a housing-first approach, using generally a public-private partnership to deal with the issue. That seems to be the model that is the most successful. Some communities are successful in using tiny or mini homes as part of the approach. I think some of you may have seen some of those specials on TV where they have those cute little mini communities of tiny homes with services to help people transition appropriately. So that's best practice. So that's part of why I'm recommending these two programs going forward and that the City Council will discuss it and see what they think makes the decision here tonight to explore the various things I just raised. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who else on the council would like to speak about this?
I'll talk. Let's turn back. First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming. I think we have everybody from the full range of the interest groups and the residents here. And it's difficult. This is the numero uno difficult challenge for us in this new year. If we turn back the Wayback Machine to about three years ago when I first became on City Council and I had a meeting before I got elected with the Malibu Task Force on Homelessness with Bert Ross and Pamela Conley-Ulik. And they brought me up to speed with what the community groups were doing and to encourage the city to actually provide the funding for that their charitable groups were doing and take over and work with the people's concern and fund the outreach workers. And we did that. And I thank you very much, John, for coming. And thank you, Alex, for coming. And I want to get their assessment in a few minutes. But we started a systematic approach to dealing with homelessness. And we set up what ultimately became this plan that's here, Homelessness Strategic Plan with the seven goals. And I think it's, when we look out at Malibu, it tends to be, there's two things, I think, that we're looking at. One is the homeless situation, which, when we had the perspective about three years ago, is completely different than what we're seeing now. If you remember, three years ago, we had a lot of, you know, instances in the shopping centers and the residents rubbing up and some of the manners that some of the speakers said a lot more. And we didn't have all these parking issues on PCH. And I think because of that court case, we have homeless people. And we have, you know, who knows? Maybe it's just a bunch of people who are enjoying the nice weather here in Malibu at bargain rates and beachfront property. And the visual impact of it is that, oh, my God, it's overwhelming. And I do think that the homeless situation throughout the state of California is definitely getting worse. There's no question about that. But to kind of get the big picture, I'd like to get, if you wouldn't mind, John, if you could come up and take to the mic here, Mr. Misery. And John... And John is in charge of the People's Concern in the city of Malibu, who we've contracted with. And if you could kind of give everybody, because you're the, you're the man in the arena, okay? You're the professional. I have a perspective of this as one of the things that I deal with as a resident and as a City Council member, but you've probably forgotten more about the issue of homelessness than everybody in this room combined. So if you could kind of talk to us about a few things. One is, how well have we done since then? And has that systematic approach that we've been using with outreach workers and, and, and getting them to housing, has that worked, one? And what's the big picture in the state of California? And what are your recommendations as the person who's really on the front line? So, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's a, that's a big charge. So let me, let me start by saying that I really appreciate all the comments from the public, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness with which the city staff and the council have approached this issue. I think we can all agree that homelessness is the, the number one issue facing not just this city, but the city of Los Angeles and county, and frankly, our state. It's a humanitarian crisis that's been a long time in the making. And it is now so visible in every part of the county of Los Angeles that every community is impacted. I really appreciate the, the idea that if every city does a little, nobody has to do a lot. That has been my mantra in all the years I've been doing this work. And everywhere I go, I say that to communities, that it is no longer acceptable to say somebody else is going to take care of it because homeless people live in every part of every community. And that's just a fact. It's more visible now than it has been at any time in the recent past. But I think it underscores the importance of every community doing something. The, to answer your question directly, Councilman, is what you're doing working? Actually, it is. If you remember back to the beginning of the outreach, the work that was, that CART was doing in partnership with the faith communities was critically important in making connections and relationships. Those are extremely valuable because all of this work, outreach work, permanent housing, mental health treatment, substance abuse treatment, pick any part of the spectrum of care for people experiencing homelessness, the, the core issue is building a trusting relationship. So the value that the city already had in, in the community volunteers and organizations that were doing that work on the ground was really important to lay the groundwork. When we first started talking with the city about bringing the people concerned here, we were very clear that we did not see ourselves as an alternative to what was being done. We saw ourselves as an additive to what was being done. Because the question always is, and then what? Because the ultimate solution to homelessness is providing housing for people. And for people who are chronically homeless or who are struggling with severe disabilities, whether it be physical or mental or substance addiction, they need a level of support to keep them housed. We are huge proponents and advocates of housing first, but I would go a step further. It's not just housing first, it's housing always. Because if we don't keep people housed, we've done them a huge disservice. So, yes, the, the additive nature of the outreach and the connection to interim and permanent housing and medical care, as you know, we, we field, you know, physicians out with, it's not just the outreach team. There's a, there's a cadre of support around those outreach teams that are working with individuals on the streets. And the question is, what's next? And Councilman, I appreciate, I think you articulated it correctly. What's next is there need to be housing options available for people. I agree that the city of Malibu cannot take on the responsibility for housing every homeless person in Los Angeles County or on the West Side or Spa Five. You simply, you can't, and frankly, you shouldn't. You are part of a community where there are other municipalities, the largest being the city of Los Angeles, which is doing its share, but you have other incorporated cities on the West Side that need to step up and have the kind of conversations that you're having and frankly, implement some of the solutions that you're proposing. So, from my perspective, I think you're absolutely moving in the right direction. I think it's the right thing to do. I would submit to you that I, I don't know what conversations you've been having. We've had a lot of conversations with supporters here in Malibu. And I can tell you that if the city can identify land to build housing, I believe that you will have the best example of a public-private partnership because I believe there are citizens here in Malibu that would contribute their own money to actually construct the housing. I believe that's true. So if the city could make the land available, which is a huge cost in the housing, I believe that you could raise the, the capital on the construction. Think that's possible. I think you have a unique opportunity here in Malibu to do something extraordinary. And we think about it, that this is a community that is some of the most expensive land in the county and the country. It's a world-class city and a destination. And if you can do it here, there's no reason that every other community couldn't do the same. You really would be trailblazers in that way. Because I think a lot of times, people think, this is a wealthy community. This is an enclave of privilege, you know, it's me and mine and nobody else. But that has not been my experience in, in working with the city of Malibu. You all are in it. You've been in it for several years. So my encouragement to you is to go the distance, keep pushing forward. I will say on behalf of the People Concerned, it's been a privilege to work in this community, our staff, to work with the volunteers, to work with the city staff, the Sheriff's Department, all of you, extraordinary people, heart, smarts, passion. You have everything that you need. You have all the components. And you have the resources to actually make something significant happen. So, thank you for letting me pontificate. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
No, I appreciate your comments. Like I said, we all have a limited perspective. You're there on the front lines. And, you know, that's a, that's a significant issue that'll need to be discussed with the people who live in this beautiful city. And, you know, if they don't feel like it will make anything better, they may not. But if they feel like the example could be picked up and, and taken by other cities too, then as you've seen, the citizenry of Malibu is very compassionate. And so your comments, I think, carry a lot of weight. So I appreciate you coming down here and sharing them with us. And if you wouldn't mind, Alex, getting your, if, I'd like to hear from, this is the tip of the spear. You know, I actually did a, a walk in his shoes one day. He's, he, and he's now in charge of the people of God and build the trust with all the homeless community. And I, if you could give your perspective as to how things have changed over the last three years, if they have, they've gotten worse, if they've gotten the same, are we doing a good job? What is your perspective? It's nice for us to say our views on the homeless situation, but I want to hear from the tip of the spear. And I want everybody else to hear about it because you're the one person who actually interfaces with homeless people every day and you're responsible and you have a lot of experience with getting them to the on-ramp and into John's arms. So, thank you.
Well, let me start by saying thank you for taking up this issue. Because it, from the boots on the ground, we see the trauma. We see the behavior that comes from trauma. We see the behavior that comes from mental illness, from substance abuse, but also from poverty. But mostly trauma. And I haven't come across one person that hasn't experienced trauma in one form or another. Trauma that goes back a lifetime, trauma that has been caused through homelessness. And we gotta keep that in mind, that trauma is a big driver of behavior. And what helps us and what we have seen in working with our clients is what John Masari was talking about, the importance of relationships. And relationships take time to build. When I started as an outreach worker, I was bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. And I was coming in and I was saying, hey, I have housing for you. I can help you. And I was greeted with beer cans accelerating in my direction. There was a wake-up call. Very quickly, I realized we have to approach this differently. We have to start with what it is that people actually need and what is actually that people want, and start there. And with that, we started building relationships. And that can take time. I've had people work with me for over a year until they finally came around and said, oh, I'm ready for housing. It takes sometimes that long of a time. But in the meantime, we were there constantly. We were there helping with the help of Venice Family Clinic, who is a great outreach tool for us. Once a week, we go out with a doctor, we go out with a psychiatrist, and we provide street medicine and we provide street psychiatry. Very important. It has made a big difference. Now let me quickly look at the numbers that we have here as far as people that we have moved off the streets. And since we started, we have moved about a hundred and twenty people off the streets. We got... So, and that means in several ways. Some of them are in permanent housing through vouchers. Those are twenty-three that are now living in a supported housing. We have currently seventeen, we have, we've had seventeen people that are in temporary housing. The number's rising. But if I look at the numbers between when we started and the numbers are now, it is very interesting that the people of on the streets, average year-to-date, in 2018 were seventy-nine, we're now down to sixty, average. So, there have been less people on the streets because we are moving them towards housing. But that takes time. That takes effort. And thanks to CART, thanks to the faith-based community that is working with us, that is helping us, we can together make a great dent in this population as far as getting them off the streets and getting them help and connecting them with services. Now I see the one thing is, okay, since Boise, numbers have crept up. And we are also seeing the influx in RVs. And this is something that we are addressing. And we are looking into who are these folks that are in the RVs? Who are they? And how many are really needing services and wanting services? And who just want to have beachfront property provided by Airbnb? We gotta be, we gotta be honest with this. This is, this is a reality that we're dealing with. And we have to be, we have to be creative. I love the idea that we are looking at the bigger picture here. And I'm, I love the idea that we are looking towards becoming a model city as far as providing services that we haven't had yet. So I'm all with what John Masari is saying that if Malibu really takes this on in the way it's heading towards, I think we're gonna stand a great chance together to make a serious change in this issue.
So you said something that was interesting, which is the daily average of people that are homeless that you traditionally dealt with pre-Boise has gone down. And, and so there has been, at the same time, this large influx of the RV community or the car community, which you really, it sounds like, haven't quite got a handle on who the heck they are and, and whether they're no-kidding homeless people or whether they're just people who have, have got a, you know, better place that they don't have to pay rent for. Am I characterizing that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's kind of what I suspected because I wanted to hear your perspective since you're the guy out there dealing with it on a day-to-day basis. I think it's like this, there's a perception, there's a tsunami of homeless people that just hit the beach and it, it, that may or may not be true, or it might just be a bunch of people who dropped anchor on PCH with their RV and it, and it looks rough. And, and I don't want to hog the mic too much here, but I kind of want to get back to what some of the early speakers said a little later, Trevor, so you can get your brain in gear. You don't have to answer this now. But think about the whole enforcement issue about this RV thing. And are we really too paranoid about the Martin versus Boise issue? And how much enforcement do we have about that? Because I think there's two different things that's going on here. One is the homeless thing, which we've traditionally had. And we've had a systematic approach to dealing with it that started about three years ago, which was preceded by the, the community groups that did a fantastic job. And then the city took it over and we've done a good job. And you just told me that the numbers have gone down. And then we've had the tsunami of RVs and cars hit here because of a court case. And I think those are two different things, really. And so I think we, we kind of have to, I'm glad that you're trying to get a handle on who the heck these guys, these people are in the car because I know you're very methodical about analyzing, and it takes time, and I appreciate that. So I'm glad to hear that you're working on that. And I'll be interested in hearing the results of that because I do think it's an important thing that we kind of have to differentiate because I'm suspecting that there are two different things going on here. And although we're super compassionate about those who need housing, we don't want to necessarily make the wrong decisions based on a bunch of people who are taking advantage of the good weather and a court case. And I'm not saying that, that these people who are in their RVs aren't needy also, but I think that we need a little more intelligence about what the heck is going on here. So, the reason I wanted you to talk as the guy who's at the tip of the spear is that we are making progress on the homeless situation. And I don't, I'm not trying to say that there's not a problem out there. But I do think that a lot of this court case has made the situation because it's visually stunning for everybody in Malibu to all of a sudden see all these cars parked along PCH. And I'm not going to hog the mic, but thank you very much for coming here and thanks for all the hard work that you do.
Okay. Thank you.
Jefferson, Skylar, would you like to say anything?
Okay, thanks. I'll take it from here. Thank you, Karen. Appreciate that very much. I wrote about a three-minute quickie on two pages. I'll read that in a moment. I just want to cite some of the cases where beach communities have had great success at the Business Roundtable on several occasions here at Malibu at City Hall at eight-thirty. First, last Friday of the month, the city of San Clemente. I have been to that site twice. I have business down in that area. It's right next to the U-Haul rental site. It's just about a mile off the five freeway and about a half-mile off of the PCH area and the beaches. And that was a great success. It's working very well. And I reach out to you to reach out and look up on Google, city of San Clemente, homeless site. And then you can get an idea of where we may head with Mikey and Karen's propositions to the council to try and do something about it. So there, there is hope in that respect. Equally, I reached out two years ago to the ACLU. And my query was to how to categorize the homeless and whether it was a violation of the homeless rights to put them into categories. And the person asked me, why would you want to categorize the homeless? And my position has now just been confirmed that we have people in homeless, motor homeless, I'll call them motor homeless. And we have people of needs. We have people of different capabilities, as Alex has said. And our Sheriff's Department, law enforcement, first responders, all need to understand that not everybody is a nine-seventeen. And the penal code of nine-seventeen is an insane person. Is that correct? Two-stripe mic, thumbs up. Nine-eighteen, okay. So I was one number off. But then we have the fifty-one-fifty rules. And so there are guidelines that we have to follow, principles that we have to follow. We also have to realize that everybody has rights when we, when we use the applications of fifty-one-fifty or nine-eighteen or nine-eighteen V. Not to get into that, I will leave those to the professionals who are here this evening because I'm sure they'll talk. I did want to write and mention to you something about the Boise case because that's been quoted all night and I figured that out, that, that's what we would be talking about. So I have two pages. I'll be as brief. I wrote it big print and I can get through it quickly. Invoking and enjoying municipal benefits covered under the Eighth Amendment's protections includes social requirements. The Eighth was created to protect all members of our social structure, including even the imprisoned. Membership in society contains a varied population of individuals with diverse abilities and needs. As participants in our society, the homeless are also furnished protections. We, that's your city, us... We, that's your city, us, law enforcement neighbors, first responders and officers that provide, also provide for compensation and they're gathered here today and they work for compensation. I'm looking to the people, the people concerned and CART, those are the real first responders because they are the hands on the street, they're not all paid, they're volunteering. So I have the most respect for those people and that's why I wrote this this evening. So those subordinates and advocates are the few who have decided to venture beyond financial compensation for their efforts to aid the homeless in the situations and are our subject matter experts, as was quoted many times here by the other council members and by the specialists. It's the advocate's statements that carry the highest appreciation and my endorsement. The Ninth Circuit Court's opinion, even after dissent. Martin and Anderson versus City of Boise, that's the part you can look up later. The inclusion of religious and religious sermons, indoctrination to obtain a better overnight stay was also a violation in the First Amendment's rights separating church from state. So some of the providers have to watch the course that they follow when they're providing beds and shelter for homeless. We have to recognize that and that's part of the Boise decision. Since Boise and utilizing the face-based bedding, two of the three sites in Boise available to the municipality to avoid camping violations in the second attempt, that's how Boise did it, it took two tries. So if you read the case, you get into the pages, look at page 31, you'll see some of the evidence that I'm quoting from. The three locations within the Boise city provided internal provisions with occupancy. So that means if you provided a bed or a shelter, it had certain criteria to go along with it and that social criteria was based upon what's on page 31. And then during the decision, the public health codes were not addressed. That's what was mentioned here many times this evening as long as, as well as with the motor homeless, where do they pump out? So there are vehicle codes that we can endorse and we can ask our sheriffs to check on, are they pumping out? And where are they pumping out? Because when you pump out, you get a pump-out ticket. So we have to incorporate that in our language as well because we have found, and you have seen pictures of people dumping down at Las Tunas. It's usually between 50 and 75 gallons, it goes straight into the ocean. And as you saw from Mr. Schmidt's presentation, the nine tons of material that were received just on the east side of PCH eventually would have found its way into the ocean. So those are the human functions that exist on public sidewalks and nearby confines. That's what you saw in some of the pictures from Mr. Schmidt's. The homeless violation of health codes, which created to protect all members of society, that's everybody. Everybody in this room as well as the homeless. So, including, you know, the infrastructure's use and maintenance, including the same passage of, of public right of ways, which was mentioned by two of the speakers, and that's in their daily lives. So we have to protect that as well because by protecting that, we're also protecting and keeping the area clean enough for the homeless people to occupy. Our home, we currently promote beach access, we promote hillside access through the MRCA, municipal buildings, law enforcement, fire, paramedic response and portable sanitation devices. The city is providing that or the county is providing that. If you go along Corral Beach and you see the motor homeless, you'll see that now there are porta-potties there, two or three of them. We're paying for that and that's a provision that somehow our tax dollars are covering. Next up is the mental health in the hospitals. These programs used to be available, we had Camarillo Mental Hospital, federally funded or state-funded. We've lost that funding that came from the federal government. It's up to us now to push that on our state and hopefully our state will look at applications to attach the federal government for the mental health that we're supposed to be giving these people and that we can't afford to do as a city ourselves. Mr. Masara's points are, we can't do this alone, but as a combined group of cities, we can achieve this. And I think that's where you were headed with your statements. So the, the last statement, one paragraph, we're all done. After conversations of two years with a member of the ACLU, I contacted that person again. We need to categorize people and it's not going to be the ACLU that takes us to task or reminds us that we can't categorize. So how do we categorize? When do we categorize? So that we can communicate better between ourselves as, as a city, between you and us and you and the sheriff's department or the first responders that may be coming to a health issue. So I'm up for that, we're gonna have to do it, we will be the first community to do that. And that way we can separate the, what we call here, the homeless taking advantage of a situation, the HTASs, and move that forward so that the true homeless, the true needy, and we, we meet those needs rather than going too deep and losing effectiveness by addressing people who really don't need the help that we're about to offer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jefferson. Skylar, would you like to say something?
Well, thank you, everybody that came here and spoke this evening. Thank you, Mikey, for putting this on for all of us to discuss. I think that we as a council ought to decide how we want to move forward. I mean, we've sort of heard that if we can push in some housing or some element of that somehow, that that's something that would probably be very useful to the people that are tackling this issue with their boots on the ground. And I'd be curious to hear from the county how they would be open to looking at some sort of overnight parking situation. I don't know if the people here from the county are prepared to speak about that right now, yes? And what locations they would be looking at to do that? I know that the public has concerns about that, but I'm curious to hear what, what that is and then we can give direction to staff to move forward.
And can Molly Reisman, Supervisor Kewell's office, can you just clarify your question so I know I'm answering the right part of it?
Mikey earlier mentioned that he had spoken with some of the staff of the county about doing a, or with Sheila about overnight parking. So people would come and register, they're, you know, in some element of, you know, working towards getting some services and they can park their vehicle safely overnight and whatnot, so that stuff.
Yeah, using Measure H, that we currently fund safe parking. In our district, we've opened safe parking in the West Valley, North Hollywood, Hollywood, the VA campus and West LA. So we've got a number of safe parking programs open, we provide funding for security services. And these parking lots are open at night, folks have to vacate during the day, but they're available at night so people have a safe place to park and it's also a way to engage people in services.
Specifically in Malibu or the surrounding areas, is there anywhere in particular that you've looked at doing that or the possibility of it?
The Dan Blocker Beach Lot has been included in safe parking, RFPs in the past. My understanding is we have a current RFP we're preparing right now that's open, Dan Blocker's on that list again. We are open to adding additional parking lots to that list as well. You know, we try and do this in partnership with cities, so we don't make this decision unilaterally. So we're interested to hear where you're interested in doing that, but we do have funding available to expand safe parking programs.
Thank you very much. So I would turn to council and say, is there anywhere else that we want to look at some sort of safe overnight parking program going on?
Well, maybe what we shouldn't do is, I mean, if anybody's got any ideas, you can throw them out right now, but rather than shoot from the hip, that we could ask, task the staff to do a more deliberate look at it and come up with some recommendations and reach out to the county and work on that. Because I think if we look at this issue, we have the homeless situation, which we have a mechanism to deal with and we have, it's working, you know, by the experts that are out there. We now have this parking issue and the, the immediate solution to that really is to have safe parking. And that's our most pressing need. The affordable housing and stuff like that, that's going to be a long-term discussion that I think we should certainly look at and contemplate, but that's gonna have to be a big discussion with the community here because it's their property, their money and they need to be in the discussion. But I think I can safely say that they'd all like to work with the county and work on the immediate need of the parking issue. So there's like tiers of urgency on this. I'd say the parking is number one and then affordable housing and stuff, which is much more significant discussion, probably gonna take a little longer.
So then maybe the, the best thing to do in regards to the parking, Riva, is if you could bring something back to council that specifically deals with looking at safe overnight parking?
More than happy to do that. I'm, my understanding that there's a current RFP process that's open right now that closes in a few days. So maybe you could speak to that and when the next cycle might open up?
I don't think you need to feel limited by the current RFP. The programs we started in North Hollywood, West, the West Valley, in Hollywood, we got some seed funding to get those programs started and then Measure H took over once the programs were up and running. So don't feel limited by the current RFP, we will work with you to get a program going regardless of the timing. I should also say, we often start these with a pretty limited number of parking spaces. So many of these have started with 10 to 20 parking spaces, they're not huge programs. We like to get them going with a small number, do a pilot, make sure it's working for the community, working for the folks using the program. And if it's very successful, then you can think about expanding. But you can start with a pretty limited number, which has a very minimal impact on the community.
That's great to know about the deadline, thank you.
So when will we be getting like an answer on whatnot, if that's gonna happen at Dan Blocker or what's the timeline with that?
So the way that RFP works, we put locations in the RFP and ask service providers if they're interested in operating it. I don't remember the exact timeline off my head, it's, it's, off the top of my head, it's probably a period of three to four months before we know if a service provider has said they're interested in operating there. But I also think we can be proactive with other sites as well and really try and create a marriage between a site and a service provider, which is more effective than just having a lot on a list with many other places listed.
Okay, so Riva, do you need any further action in regards to that specifically or just to move forward with this right now or?
Just to be clear, you'd like us to come back with suggestions for locations for safe parking lots and we'll work with the county to come up with a timeline if we were able to identify something, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, ideally it would be nice to get something like this in place sooner than later. Obviously, the, the street parking thing is a major issue right now, so the sooner the better, but Karen has something she wanted to mention.
Understood.
Yep, thanks Molly, maybe we might call you back up.
Thank you. Okay, thank you to everybody who came and spoke and emailed us. And there's a lot of people in the room who have been hands-on with this for many years and I want to thank you all for everything you've done, paid and unpaid, self-appointed or otherwise. It's a serious issue and when we talk about costs, it's gonna cost more to not deal with this problem than to deal with it. So we've got to be smart about that. It seems really scary, I'll just say that for starters because I have found in conversations that even the most generous-spirited people often do not want some kind of facility or service near them. So, just recognize it. We are intent, I believe as a council, on finding some solutions in both facilities and services. They have to go hand-in-hand, one without the other is pointless. And as Mikey said, we had a conversation with Superintendent Sheila Kewell today for about maybe 45 minutes. We talked about several locations, we talked about all kinds of properties, some of them that we or she controls and some that we don't. We're willing to work with any agency, with any private party, with anybody who has solutions in mind. And I think some of the most successful programs I've seen have been private-public partnerships. And I want to point out, right now we don't have anything in mind, even for affordable housing. It may be public property, it may be private property, so keep that in mind. No, nobody has gone down any road right now. One thing about safe parking, private property actually, I think, offers a better solution. On private property, trespassing laws can be used to control who's in the lots, who's outside them, who's enrolled in services. And private property is, in my opinion, the optimal way to handle that because we've got more leverage, particularly in light of the Boise decision. But that might not happen, so we have to be ready for that. I want to say that I appreciate the county. We will definitely be asking for help on this because we can't do it alone. We've gotten to this point and, and everybody has noticed how drastically things have changed in the last year or so, particularly with the RVs. And I'm not sure exactly how, but there must be a way to sort of have an inventory, as Rick suggested, of who and, and as Alex said, who is where, why are they there? And, and what other options might they have and, and who can we help? I'd like to ask if someone from the sheriff, Jim Braden or Mike Trinan, you guys can decide among yourselves, if you could talk to us about what you see here in Malibu, in the rest of the county and how law enforcement can and cannot solve problems? And I, I know you all have become sort of the mental health provider of last resort, which is less than ideal. So what can you tell us?
Okay, so that's a good point to start with. Mike and I have both 30 years' experience and we both worked patrol a lot. This station, my first exposure to it was in 1999. And the calls, just like Karen just said, the volume of calls for mental issues was minimal. And over the years, it's grown some, but what we see, and, and even most of you can agree, like over those 20 years I've served your community in different capacities, you never saw all these motor homes along the roadway. Because there was a law in Malibu that you can't sleep in your car overnight and it was enforced all the time. And same with camping rules, that there was no illegal camping. And it's a misdemeanor and the other one is also, it's arrestable offense if, if we choose to do that. And just like Rick said, I think this is two different things in that you have this Boise decision and it's more pointed at, at an individual homeless person on the street. But then you look at other court decisions and everything we do, it has to have legal standing. And what, if you look at the city of LA, in the last five years, they've been sued several times. And what they did, they first had a law that you couldn't dwell in your vehicle. That's a pretty broad thing and they had a team they created, they had a 21-person team. They would go out to these areas where they had problems and they'd send these guys out. And it talked all about, I read the whole lawsuit, and it talked about individuals. They had a face to them, they were in their car for some reason. Most of them, at some point, they lived in a house and everything, but some of them had unfortunate medical things, some of them couldn't keep a job, some of them, all kinds of different things. Or that they're living on like SSI and they have a limited income to buy an apartment or anything else. So these people end up in a car and this team basically would go out and decide who they decided was dwelling in their vehicle. And like one guy's story was, he sleeps in the shelter, so he's not even sleeping in his car. Well, that kind of enforcement, aggressive enforcement, created a problem because it created lawsuits and then it created that these lawsuits were a certain opinion and then it moved on, like to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. And just like in the city of LA, that dwelling thing is not in place anymore. There's a way different plan in place, which is, they have a whole map of the city and it shows where you can't be and then there's green areas where you can park. And they have safe parking areas also, but they don't allow parking within. And they have safe parking areas also, but they don't allow parking within 500 feet of a school, a park, or a daycare. And they don't allow you in the residential areas. So there was a definite compromise, and there is no team anymore out enforcing whatever. That, most of you guys that spoke, you spoke very compassionately, because this is a situation that literally things have changed. And like I said, we have to have legal standing for what we do. It's not as simple as, oh, we, you need to go out aggressively and do this to these people. Well, if you really read all the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals stuff in relation to homeless people and stuff, that's what's been done all over the country, is a city chases them out to a different city. Well, if you read the opinions, it basically says, you need to help these people. So that's the situation we're in. Our hands kind of get tied. We do a lot of things, just like when they say dumping sewage, they wrote two different misdemeanor sites in that area of Las Tunas for people dumping sewage. The 72-hour rule in moving, they, like the VOPs, the volunteer, they go out and red-tag these vehicles. Well, the last week, in the last couple weeks, they red-tagged 75 different vehicles. You know how many of those moved within, and then they went back in the three days? That was the plan. They go back in the three days, and then they let us know, if they have a tow-able vehicle, we'll send a deputy or a CSO we have over there to tow the vehicle. Each and every one of those moved. So you have people that know the rules, and just on the weekend, you might look up LA Times did an article on this in Malibu, and the closing statement in the article was, you know, I, I lived over here, now I came here, it's nice, and, and, and another guy, he's lived here forever, why the hell would I move? That's what it says. That's what it says. And, and, and we do as much as we can, but I'm telling you, we have to have legal standing to do it. And when, when the court, when the district attorney's office tells us, you can't do this, it's not constitutional. It, it doesn't meet the thing. They can't take the illegal camping site and prosecute it because it would be illegal. But the answer is really all the things we're talking about. It's creating some type of shelter, it's creating some type of safe parking, and like there's, the first Wednesday of every month, there's a Public Safety Council meeting here. And y'all can come to that too, but we've had discussions in that, as far as like the signage they did from Topanga to coastline, like the county did. And it took the county two years to get that through. But why, why they allowed them to do it was they had places for the people to go. And if you read most of those court decisions, that's what it's saying. There has to be someplace to go. Just like the illegal camping, if, if we had a shelter where people could go, we can go back and start enforcing that. Now, this RV thing, this is a phenomenon that's growing all through California along the coast. And there's actually a, a federal injunction in the city of San Diego because they tried to enforce this stuff, and they've had to back off, to where these people are parking all over the place. It's a, it's a definite issue. But you never saw it before, but with these recent court cases, yes, you're seeing it. I saw it too. I run the summer team too on the beach. There was about 14 to 18 people trying to live along Zuma Beach, and believe me, I made creative projects out of them. Okay? But there's limitations too. There just is. So we all, I have to work together. But just like the host team we have, the, that mental health evaluation team, they had to go on a call, but they, we never had that before out here. So we have a team assigned to our station. Those guys, they're good in that, they'll, they'll try to align these people with services when they get out of the, usually they go to Olive View when we're here. But the other gentleman that spoke and said there needs to be more psych services, you're absolutely right, because the, the psych services in LA County, they seem to me, this is just my personal opinion, that it's just a revolving door. That we take someone there and they're held a very, very short period of time. There's not, they're not held for a period of time where they could become stable on medication. And then one of the other gentlemen spoke about, like a conservatorship or something. And there is a movement in the state by the governor that, that what it would do is, if someone has eight holes or more in a year, that the state has a right to come in and take them into court and take a conservatorship. And even a lot of what Jefferson referred to, like the Camarillo, in, in, I did a, a project in college. So it was an analysis of this mental health system. In California in the 60s, in late 60s, was seen throughout the world as the only place in the world that addressed mental health issues. They had 13 of those campuses throughout the state. But if you read about it, there was court decisions that really challenged taking conservatorship of people. And like the one gentleman said, oh, give them a choice, either you go to jail or go here. That is not how it works in this country. Okay? So it's gonna take compassion, and it's gonna take effort, but the thing is, we have about 100 people living in cars here. But in LA County, right tonight, there is about 16,500 people living in cars. Cars, RVs, and vans. So it's to address that 100, and it's to address the 60 or 70 people we have sleeping outside here. And that would assist us in doing our job, because we would fulfill what these, these court decisions, like Boise is saying, that you have to have an alternative for the person if you're gonna do an enforcement. Any questions? Want to speak?
Thank you, Sergeant Braden.
Yeah, it's been brought up tonight, but I, I think collectively, we're, we all gotta work together on this. I mean, Mikey said it, everyone said it. And all, all the homeless are, are different, like that woman said. Okay. Yeah, they're all different. They all have different, just like Alex also, they all have different things that have, a different trauma that's happened in their lives, some have different circumstances. And they're all different, and a lot of times, it's just a small percentage of ones that are causing the problems. You know, like people, you know, a lot through social media of what goes on at Ralph's, sometimes it's just a few guys. And then even that encampment that Don Schmitz, sometimes just a couple guys that are, that's one of their disorders. Let's say collecting things. Sometimes, sometimes people in the public see a large encampment, they think it's like 10, 20 guys, which Don thought it was too. Sometimes it's three, four guys that literally spend the night collecting things. And then it makes that encampment, you know, look like there's 15, 20 guys. So sometimes it's a small percentage. And then another misconception, I just want to bring it up. Some people think that they see a guy cause a problem, they don't think, you know, we did anything, meaning the sheriff's, but sometimes we address every call, and we just address whatever crime occurred. A lot of times, it's just a misdemeanor, so sometimes people will hit me up the next day, and Ralph's, and say, why is that guy walking around? If he just did a misdemeanor-type crime, sometimes it's like, it's, you know, three hours in jail, and we release him. That's what we have to do. Doesn't really fit, you know, they expect him to be in prison for a year or two. I mean, I mean, I've really had those conversations. I said, you know, if it's trespassing, it's trespassing. So we, we just, that's it. But like Alex said also, it's come a long way. I've seen, I've seen so much change over the year, but, but I've also seen, you know, Alex goes around with Dr. King, and I've seen guys that, a year or two ago, I couldn't even talk to. And some of these guys, when they're properly medicated, you could actually have a conversation with them. It's kind, it's kind of neat to see that too, so. That's it.
Thank you, Deputy Trinan.
I'll say a couple more things. Just like the Boise decision or other court decisions ties our hands with these cars and everything else, Prop 47 that passed in the state of California, and like Mike said, a lot of crimes were, what were felonies before were moved down to misdemeanors, which means they won't go to state prison for them. They're the county's responsibility. But in that, the drug charges for possession of drugs went from felonies to misdemeanors. So you have people, like before, when there was a felony, they, there was a thing called Prop 36, which was, the judge would offer them a deal in court. You go to rehab, and you're clean for so long, and you don't go to state prison. All that's gone now. And so it leaves a lot of people just spinning through the system. It's not effective for us anyway. And, and Mike hit on one other point I wanted to make. Maybe I'll think of it later, but the, there is other things that tie our hands and put these people back out. But, okay, I remember the other point. When someone was saying about enforcement and stuff, my normal job is working as watch commander at Lost Hill Station. So I, I'm in charge of all the field units, all the stuff. So everything that comes through, every arrest that's made, I have to prove it. Okay, so you'll be happy to know, there were several arrests made in Malibu, okay, last weekend. One was a felony for criminal threats, and that was down at Las Tunas, but don't blame it on the RVers, okay? Because the RVers were actually the victim there. Okay, somebody else came trying to collect money from them, and they were the victim. And then the guy bonded out on the felony criminal charge, only to go back and do it again. So he's, he's now being held, okay? But, and then there was other ones. There's like, one of the guys, he's, he hangs out toward Point Doom and down around Westford Beach and stuff. And I'll, I'll give him this, he, he drinks a lot, you know, I've had talks with him, but it doesn't seem to change anything. But he's, he's probably in his late 30s, and, but he's always nice when we arrest him. I'll give him that. Okay? So, so there is activity out there, and there, it's not, it's not for lack of creativity. And just like I said, Sheriff's Department putting those resources, giving us a mental health team, giving us Bill's team as an asset when we have major issues, it all helps. And same with Mike Trinan. You guys gotta realize, Mike knows, like, when you put a face on these people, he knows them all by name. Okay? And it, it, it'll be a great loss for the city when Mike retires, okay? Because Mike put his soul into doing this job, and it makes your community function well, okay?
Just to let you know, Mike has a street name, Two Stripe Mike.
Thank you both. We all appreciate your dedication and your perspective. I, I want to say a couple more things, and then we're gonna have to try to get consensus on some motions here. But there was a comment made tonight that, something to the effect of the people that were living in RVs or homeless here are people who've come here from other places. That is true to a large extent, but I know, and I'm sure some of you in the room know, there are local people. There are kids that I knew growing up here that went to school with my kids, who now live on the street. And it's really sad to see, and I'm sure every community has something like that. And a lot of people that I talk to, I'm realizing more and more, when somebody says to me, oh, I have a brother, I have a nephew, my son, many, many, many families have a person who has somehow become disconnected from the family and employment and society. So we do have that humanitarian, social crisis on our hands. That being said, I want to make sure everybody knows that we, as a council, very clearly see the public health impact, the environmental impact. The video that I saw recently of raw sewage being poured out onto the beach down at Las Tunas, nobody wants that, and there's a million reasons, we can all talk about it later, why that's not good and cannot continue. The public safety aspect of it, from fires being started to needles discarded, aggressive behavior, obviously, nobody wants any of that either. And so we have to start to make some motions here, we all know that. We can't throw up our hands, we can't wish it away or push it away, north, south, or anywhere else. So I would suggest that we now try to develop some priorities as a council. I don't know if I'll call it a wish list, but we don't have the resources to do everything that we would all like to do. But we need to start with something, and it seems like the easiest place to start is with safe parking. And again, I'll say, there's no commitment right now on exactly where that would be. So, okay, Rick, please.
No, I agree with you.
Could I add one thing? To look to our professional folks and look for some kind of system that we can categorize, so that among ourselves, as educators and providers, and people of influence for the municipal codes, so that we can get on this dialogue track of what level of service these people need, and what, if we can identify people who don't need the service as much as other people. But without that understanding, it's difficult for us to communicate, because whether it's an ABC, DEF, or a 1234, if we can't do that, it's hard for us to explain what we see on the street. I'm on the street. Today, I dealt with three homeless people on PCH coming into my retail store. And how I deal with them is because I knew they weren't threatening, they were simple-minded, they were just kind of bumming around, and they weren't a threat. So they should not be put in the same category as somebody who's going through a violent rage, who may be drug-addicted or needs more help, immediate help, a 5150 or a 918 Victor. So without the categorization, and actually, when I reached out to ACLU, they said, because it's for the public's benefit, and because it's for the benefit of the homeless, you can create a category of 1 to 5, or 1 to 3, or ABC. So if we could ask these folks, our professionals, how they go about judging who needs more assistance from those who don't need as much assistance, that category system would really help us out.
I think Alex can speak to that. We've spoken about this a number of times, and part of that system is entirely broken. And I think it's, I would love you to share your perspective on that now.
Okay, well, as far as the, as far as the categorization is going, we're doing that sort of, or actually pretty accurately with the, what's called the VI Spadat, which is a tool that allows us to assess the vulnerability of a, of an individual. So we're looking at age, we're looking at mental health, we're looking at physical health, we're looking at substance abuse. So if all three, for instance, would be checked off, then that would be a person that would be trimorbid. And that would raise their vulnerability score. And if we have currently, where LASSA has come up with the new CES system that they're now implementing, which is the centralized entry system, and people that are scoring over a 13, which is a pretty high score, that includes trimorbidity, or at least dual morbidity, and problems with the law, and other factors that are bringing that score that high up, they have priority, and we'll get into a matching system. We will get a match for a housing resource, and then we can start working with that person towards getting them housed, towards getting a voucher. And that's how it's currently working. It still has problems here and there, because, simply because somebody has a score of 13. problems here and there because, um, simply because somebody has a score of thirteen doesn't necessarily mean that they're ready for housing. Um, and at the same time, we have people that were scored at a eight or a ten. They are document ready and they're ready and willing to get housed and we don't get a voucher. So, but these are things that need to be, uh, that need to be fixed and, um, and we're working on that. Um, so that actually what's seen as, as policy, uh, which is a very well-meant policy. On the other hand, we're looking at, so how is this actually translating into boots on the ground? How is this actually looking in reality? So we're, we're, we're working on that.
Equally, so that the layman and the people in the audience and the people watching at home tonight can make those assessments for themselves and help you and help us so that we're on the same sheet of papers, what I'm trying to get to. And I know you have your technical ways of looking at it, but it's, it's in too much in depth for the average person that's here this evening. I mean, we are the administrators, we understand what you're doing. But we're trying to reach out to ten thousand people. And so how can we do that? And that's what I'm asking you to do is if that could be one of these things that the council asks of you and your professionals, how do we talk about this? And at what level do we do that?
Okay, well, I think we can look at that in terms of, for instance, we could use, uh, the model of, um, of how, of, of how ready are people? So we could, for instance, categorize into people who are pre-contemplative, people who are not wanting and are not interested in any kind of services. Then we could see, uh, we could categorize people into saying, okay, well, they are sort of interested in services, but still ambivalent about it. And then we could go and say in people, oh yes, they are interested. And, um, we have developed internally a, um, a system that is on that continuum of change where we do exactly that, where we categorize, uh, the clients that we're working with as not engaged, repeat not engaged, engaged, and level one, which would be people that are Spadatted, that are actually signed up. And level two are the people that are actually holding a voucher and have been matched. So that is one way we could categorize it and we can go then, um, we can talk about this and can say, okay, how can we make a less technical categorization of the people that we're dealing with? And Scott and I, we are, uh, making it our, um, our priority now to look at those, um, RVs and, and the people that are, um, camping alongside PCH. I mean, Scott and I, we went down yesterday and we counted sixty-four vehicles. So, and there were, uh, thirty-one RVs and thirty-four cars and other, uh, kind of vehicles.
What area?
We started up in Trancas and we went all the way down to Las Tunas.
So that was midweek.
That was, that was midweek at around four o'clock. So, um, we didn't get all the license plates, we didn't get all the, um, all the intricacies because we were like kind of getting into rush hour traffic, jumping and, and making sure that we're not, uh, uh, causing any, any problems there. So, but what that showed us is that we need to look at and take some more time and go, um, area by area and hopefully with the help of the sheriffs and with the help of the, um, of maybe somebody from the public health department to come and see who is there and who are we dealing with? And to really, then we can categorize and saying, oh yeah, here are the free floaters, here are the people that are traveling, here are the people that are RBNBing, here are the people that have checked out. And then there are the people who actually want help and have just down on their luck and said, okay, well, it may be better to have my, to park my car here, um, or my SUV here on the beach because it's much nicer than being in, in West LA. And it's also safer. But I want help. And so we're reaching out to that. And so our hope is that we're actually getting, uh, getting people that we can uh, get into the system and then start working with them towards permanent housing.
Can I interject here for one sec?
Yeah, I'll be quick after, just one second.
I think what we're doing is we're, we're getting into some real, uh, fine minutia here about his job, which is ongoing and he's doing that. And that's not really an action item for tonight. He's already talked about the fact that he's got an ongoing assessment of figuring out who those people are and the, and the thing. He's doing that. He's, he's already doing that. And, and that's, that is a big component of, of getting us more intelligence about what we need to move forward. And I appreciate that. But that's not an action item that we need to talk about tonight. We really need to kind of get to a decision on the things we need to talk about, which is the parking lots. Or do we need security companies? Do we need city staff? Do we need to consider vacant land? What about using the courthouse, et cetera? And I, I have nothing but respect for him and, and he does a great job at that, but we don't need to get in the weeds right now. He's already doing that. So let's talk about the action items, if you don't mind. And I hate to disrupt here, but we need to get back focused. If you don't mind.
I, I appreciate that. I was just trying to make sure that everybody understood that there was a category arrangement that he does have and we could promote that educationally. So that could be a component.
A great idea.
So, um, I mean, is there consensus on the council? We're going to continue to move forward with the people concerned. That's funded for the year. There's not, uh, I mean, let's, if we look at, does the council think that we should possibly look at getting the county to use the courthouse as a shelter? That's something we should pursue.
I think we should explore, I think we should explore with the county what properties they may have that go towards services or the safe parking program.
Okay, so that is, is a single item.
Including the courthouse.
Yes, so the courthouse, the parking lots and see what kind of overlap can happen there with the county.
And do we want to include potentially for any of those considerations, our city-owned properties?
I would say yes. We'd be foolish not to look at all our options right now. And I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's state property options, like.
I was just going to add that, that there might be some state.
There's all sorts of properties. It's hard to tell who owns them till you look.
Yeah, and nearby, don't have to be within the city limits. I think we might be able to, uh, appeal to the county or in the nearby community in the hinterland also.
You, you have a good point. I've seen a couple of properties. Basically, they're sort of Malibu, but they're actually not Malibu. That might be fit into that. You're, you're right.
Okay, and we need to discuss whether it should, at this point, or maybe this is too much detail about whether these parking lots should include a security company or includes more city staff. I mean, it sounds like we should kind of go with the model that they've been using in Los Angeles.
It's my understanding what the county model is for the safe parking lots is that there's actually a service provider of a professional organization that, that operates and manages. That's not something, um, I, it's my understanding that city staff would take on. Um, and if I'm not mistaken, the, uh, uh, item about a security company would be citywide for, just to have another presence in additional to the sheriff or perhaps just in civic center. Um, and I know that there are other cities that are contract cities that have, uh, taken that upon themselves to, to get some other services. And I see the city attorney looking puzzled, but I'll let him jump in.
Oh, I was gonna say, uh, the staff can bring back, um, details about how those, the county's safe parking program works and what other options we could do on there in terms of a private security force. I would have some reservations in, in terms of how that would be used or what purpose that would be. Um, it sounds like a police department. So we can explore that, but I'd be curious more about what we're.
I think we should just talk about per parking lot, you know, like parking lot security that attends to the actual functions of the, uh, the safe parking program. Okay.
Councilmember Mullin, again, it's my understanding that the safe parking lots operate with a service provider. And that's all taken care of in terms of security. It's, I believe if, um, Mayor Protem, uh, Pearson was talking about a security company, it was just to have another set of eyes and ears kind of out there um, in the community, another, somebody else that might be, um, of presence to help immediate non-law enforcement related issues, but I'll let him speak to that.
Yeah, may, maybe the council doesn't want to endorse that, but there's a lot of fear. There's, there are issues. And it was a thought to consider whether we should hire a couple more eyes and ears on the ground to assist the sheriff and, and, and in vulnerable areas, try and make the citizenry more safe and secure and feel more safe and secure. That was just an option and something we can discuss.
I, I feel I have to say something about safe parking right now, um, or any of the, uh, solutions we're talking about. When the city acquired the three properties, uh, in, I think it closed maybe in September of twenty eighteen, um, the community was promised uh, a robust, uh, process of, of, um, input, uh, whether that be surveys, town hall meetings, uh, in any way of gathering community, um, uh, input and consensus on how those properties would be used. And, um, as far as I'm concerned, that should not go away. I, I want to make sure no one's under the impression that we, or at least I, uh, am ready to commit any particular property without community consensus.
Well, then to keep this on the fast track, why don't we just exclude those? And then we can just look at all the other, because we need to get to the, where the rubber meets the road here pretty quick and get with some solutions and not have to, if that's, if, and I agree with you, by the way, I agree with you. So I think let's not consider those properties that we bought so we can get to a solution quickly.
Well, that, and the one reason, just to add to it, and that's fine, is that's why I suggest that we consider an item, uh, discussing whether to fast track doing that public process with our property, not for the intent of, you know, just doing homeless type services, but so we can start to make those decisions in case there is a property that does work well, that makes sense. We've, we're way behind on that process for the community already. Now might be the time to actually bring that forward. Well, because it's overdue and because we have a lot of priorities to try and figure out.
Thank you. I would also like somebody at staff or somebody at our level to reach out to the city of San Clemente to see how successful their operation is. Once again, it's a large beach community, depends on tourism, has a main highway on one side and a beach on the other. And they've managed to deal with it pretty successfully. It made it into the news last year. So if somebody could reach out, we could model after that and say, here, another city has proven and done this and made the challenges in court go away.
Um, well, in, coincidentally, in two weeks, uh, a few of us, uh, are planning a trip down to Laguna Beach to look at a, um, I believe it's a shelter. Susan, thank you. Susan put that together. Um.
And how did they end up with a shelter?
Probably hit San Clemente on the way down or back because we, uh.
Right off Avenue de Pico. Can't miss it.
Okay, um, yeah, we might as well kill two birds, absolutely.
And just to people know, the reason Laguna Beach has a shelter, which apparently is successful, is because they were sued for not providing services. And it turns out, apparently appears to be working pretty well. So a lesson learned there that maybe we can learn from.
Okay, so, uh, let's get some consensus here, uh, maybe on the order of priorities and how we move ahead. And it sounds like with the conversation we had with the county, uh, there's an RFP open right now, but that we're not tied just to that particular one. So, um, I don't know if I can put this into words the way I'm thinking it. I, I, I'd like to see consensus, you guys say, yeah, yay, no, um, about pursuing a safe parking area with the county for starters.
Areas.
Areas, okay. I'm not sure if it's realistic to ask if we can get something in the next two days. I think, I think this one right now closes on Friday. But, but it sounded like the county was willing to be flexible and work with us on that. So I don't think we need to worry about the next two days.
I think that there's consensus on that at this time.
Okay. So there's that.
So that's, so that's a consensus to direct staff to return with, uh, information and locations for potential safe parking program. And I heard earlier this would include exploring property, public properties owned by the state, county, or the city.
Correct.
And, uh, do you want to include the courthouse issue with that?
I think that the courthouse should be looked at as a possibility of being a shelter.
That, that was part of the discussion with Supervisor Kuehl today and the feedback we got from her was that it was only a fraction of the building, I believe, that could be considered. Um, I think what she was talking about was, um, who actually owns the building, which is mostly owned by the state, but that doesn't mean that there isn't a path forward to try and use it as a shelter. So if you'd like to give us direction to work with, um, the county on that, we're more than happy to do that.
I think that'd be a wise move.
So there's a consensus then to, uh, direct staff to explore the potential for a temporary shelter being put at, um, the county courthouse property?
Yes.
One more?
Okay.
Everyone, okay.
I think as far as affordable housing, we have a lot, a long ways to go. Um, Mikey and I, as he said, have had a lot of meetings with, uh, agencies, nonprofits and private individuals. If anybody's listening and you have private property that you'd like to talk to us about, uh, coordinating a, an affordable housing project, please call us immediately or email us. Um, so I think that one's going to have to be, um, it's something that we need to do.
It's ongoing.
Yeah, it is ongoing. Does anybody have another item they'd like to add?
I, I, I would suggest, just because we're heading into a lot, that, um, Riva comes back with analysis of what, what we might need to do on a staffing level to help manage this. Because even if we bring in outside agencies, we have to manage our end of it. And I don't know that, from what I see, we don't have the staff for that now. And we probably should hire an expert potentially. That's my guess. I'm not going to speak for everyone else. I think, um, my personal opinion, I want, Susan's done an amazing job, but I really wanted to focus on, um, public safety issues more related to fire resiliency, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Seems like you kind of got, you've done a great job even giving a whole extra job, which is about to get way more overwhelming, I suspect. So that would, that would be my.
More than happy to come back with information for you. Okay, great. And, um, you know, obviously we have to look at the budgeting of these issues and any partnerships that we can form.
Right.
We, we can't handle it alone.
Right, and I think you're a master at this. Can we add, looking at outside funding, how that might work through the different available mechanisms, which seems like right now, there's a lot of money there. And if we have a plan and we're ready to move on it, it seems likely from the conversations we've had lately that we can get some funding, which we desperately would need to pull this off.
So that'd be to explore, um, outside sources for funding for the programs?
State, county.
Anywhere.
Yeah, anywhere.
Okay.
Over at Paul's house, anywhere. I was kidding.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
But could we, uh, hear a recap of those motions?
Sure. I think we had, there was, uh, the, the, the motion then would be to direct staff to return with a report about, um, a number of options for addressing these homeless issues in the city, including exploring safe parking areas in the city, including all public, public property. Also exploring, uh, the potential for a temporary shelter at the courthouse property. Also to return with, um, analysis of potential staffing needs um, related to these different options. And also to explore outside funding and other sources for funding to fund any of these, these, um, options.
And I want to add on to that, if we don't already have the information, let's, uh, listen to what Jefferson says and see if we can get some information from how San Clemente has been successful.
So a report on, um, San Clemente and, and Laguna Beach and any other, um, successful approaches to these issues?
Yes.
Reflect, uh, your motion.
Okay, so that's the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, uh, we have a motion to adjourn and a second and we will be adjourning in memory of community members Mark Jason and Michael Zakian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I want to thank, uh, the professionals who are out there every day on the leading edge. Alex, John, Terry, and I forgot your name, sir. But I appreciate everything. I mean, you guys are up to your neck in this and it's a very noble service that you've done, very solvus of you. Thank you very much for giving me your time and I can't tell you how much the community appreciates everything you've done. And you too, Karen Moss. Thank you.
And thank you, everyone who came down on Wednesday night for your input and your help and feel free to follow up with us. This will be ongoing conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're adjourned at eight thirty-two.